Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. We've got a beautiful day outside. Gotta love it. Uh, roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Artie Brison.
Here.
Kristy Hiltonan.
I have some excuse.
Chris Oregan.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine here.
Okay. Uh, bills payable, I will entertain a motion.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Work. Okay, motion and support, any discussion?
Just had a couple of questions. Um, I see a lot of union dues. Do we collect those from the employees and then?
Their payroll deduct, yeah. So then we deduct them from their payroll check and then we pay the union dues.
All right, so it goes into our general fund and then comes out?
Yes, in and out.
All right. And then, did you just split up between the water and sewer fund, like all their expenses? Cause I see, like, the office supplies and everything was duplicated.
Yep, our DPW is a water and sewer department, so most of their expenses are split.
Okay, so you just buy the get the in cartridges and just put half and half and all that? Okay. All right.
Any other questions, discussion?
The same thing with the vision premiums, that comes out of their check and then?
Vision premiums?
Or do we just pay for everyone's vision? Yeah, seven hundred dollars for vision premiums?
Yep, that's monthly employer amount.
So we, we just pay all their vision or do they pay part of it? No?
They have a, they have a copay in their payroll deduct, depending on what they're taking, yeah.
All right, so we'll talk about that when I come in, right?
Sure.
And talk about insurances, okay. Thank you. That's all.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Brison.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, next is our supervisors' report. Let me get right into it. Uh, we're still working with our auditors to finish our, um, audit report. Uh, it's going well. Uh, working on upgrading our water ordinance, our water line extension project on Columbine. Been working on that, uh, finishing the Pearl Beach Pier project, um, and our outdoor classroom project. Um, we did work with Algenac to increase our water pressure that they're supplying to us, uh, to forty-four to forty-five PSIs. They changed the runtime on their high service pumps and also the water levels that are in their water tower and it seems to be holding. Um, been, uh, working with county parks and the beach park, um, and, uh, that's going forward. Uh, bids are going out, uh, on my bids to demo the two existing houses that are on, on the property. So if you know anybody who's interested in to place in a bid to tear a couple of houses down, go to my bids and you can submit a bid for it. Um, a while ago, we applied for, uh, DNR trust fund development grant, uh, to pay for outdoor exercise equipment as we've been looking at around the walking path. And, um, they sent me, um, a bunch of questions I had to answer, uh, in preparation of the grant that they had. Um, mainly that the, the park design falls under, will fall under universal design, uh, so it'll be, you know, access to everybody and the project is ecologically sustainable, which I answered those questions for them. And we did miss out on, on a few points under park visibility. I would have never guessed. We don't have a sign that says Clay Township Park on our park. We just assume it's there, right? And, uh, I got there looking, so maybe we should entertain one, a sign that says Clay Township Park at the southwest corner in the parking lot, so of the, of the park. Uh, yeah, we lost out five points for that. Um, hopefully I'll know on that grant, uh, in November, but they've been pushing back. They're supposed to let everybody know on the SPAR grant results mid-September, but they pushed that back to mid-October now, but, which we don't have to worry about, cause we already got ours. Uh, the sturgeon festival this last tournament, or this last tournament, this last weekend was very good. Um, there were about, there were thirty boats in the, in the tournament and it was a one-night tournament, started Saturday night, goes to Sunday morning. In one night, thirty boats caught ninety-nine fish, ninety-nine sturgeon they caught and released. So that's pretty cool.
What was the biggest?
Uh, it was seventy-two inches plus. And second place was right behind it, was seventy-one inches plus.
Big fish.
And, um, yeah, so that, that was way cool and they all had, had fun, it seems like. Um, let's see, we have our Journey cover band, it's called From Infinity and Beyond. It's gonna be playing in our park October twenty-first, from six to nine. And the Clay Township Hunter Safety Class is, starts, is October seventeenth through the nineteenth, from four to eight after school and dinner will be provided if anyone wants to sign up for that. You, you, you have very many vacancies for that?
We're now, we're full and we're on our way to this.
Oh, we are full? Okay, well, it's too late to sign up for that then. I didn't realize they were full. But it fills out every year, we do about fifty people, so. And that's all I have. Uh, okay, moving right along, public comments, do we have any public comments?
Just in general, that break up?
Yeah, yeah, just come up and say your name and, uh, address and...
Okay, my name's Dana Tackett, I live at nine three six two Lake Point. Um, I talked to you earlier today, Artie, about, um, my hens on my house, at my house.
Oh, yeah.
Six hens. I bought eight hens, two ended up being roosters, didn't know that. Um, so I received a letter indicating that, um, I'm only allowed six hens on my property, which I do have six hens. Um, but I was told I had to remove my roosters. Not sure why, because Avery's amendment doesn't say anything about roosters and either does, sorry, section three dash twenty-one Recreation Animals, it says six or fewer hens may be permitted on parcels less than two acres. I like my roosters, cause they protect my hens. Like, cause we have coyotes in the back, we have box in the back, we have raccoons. They notify us at nighttime. The other day, we had coyotes again in the backyard, so they don't make a whole lot of noise, from my understanding, it's, um, the complaint is because of the noise during the daytime, which I'm, they don't make that much noise. I mean, I, my neighbors don't hear them next door to me. I have, my neighbor just sold her house and the guy's been out there like five or six times and apparently it didn't bother him when he came out, because he's still buying her house. Um, when I talked to Roman on nine nineteen, he told me that the ordinance is up to interpretation. So I was kinda confused by that, um, being interpretation, cause anyone can perceive things differently, like with the noise ordinance, it could be, uh, frequency or extended noise. So I'm kinda confused what to do here. You said I could get them rings and put rings on my chickens to keep my, uh, my rooster, to keep them quiet, is that what I need to do or does this need to be amended or?
Well, our, our, our ordinance states you could have six hens.
Yep, which I do.
It doesn't state you can have roosters.
Correct.
And there's a reason, because of noise. And like I told you earlier, they make a ring that you can put on the rooster's neck that will enable them so they can't crow loud.
Okay.
And still, you're, you're, technically, you're still breaking the ordinance, but if your neighbors are satisfied with that, the complainants, then, you know...
Okay, you're saying they're breaking the ordinance, but I don't see the word rooster in the ordinance, that's why I'm kinda a little confused here.
You're not allowed to have them, that's why.
What was that?
Cause you're allowed to have hens, but you're not allowed to have roosters.
Right, I, I explained this to you on the phone and that, that's, that's what the ordinance, we allow six hens.
I'm just saying, maybe we should amend this then and say no roosters or something, so this doesn't happen again in the future, because it doesn't say roosters, it just says hens.
Right.
And hens are female and that's what I have, I have hens and I have my roosters and it's for my eggs, it's cause we eat healthy and we don't want Bill Gates' eggs, I'm sorry, but I don't. That's why I go to a cattle farm and my husband hunts and we have chickens, cause we wanna make sure we know what we're eating and my guys eat healthy. I, you know, they make noise when I go out there, cause I'm feeding them and they like me and they're like, oh, that lady's bringing us treats again, or we're getting fresh water, you know, they have names, they know who I am, just like a dog, you know? You go home and sometimes a dog barks at you, right? It gets all happy and makes noise and everything. My, my roosters and my chickens do the same thing. So I just wanna make sure that I'm following the rules, because I had a limited date to be able to comply and I wanna make sure that I'm complying by that date. So if I get these rings, I have to see if we get any more complaints or do I have to comply?
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. Any other public comments?
My name is Karen Klingenberg, I live at ninety thirty-two Field Road and I have put in complaints over seven weeks ago, which Artie rejected, uh, requested that I take this up with Gary. Still, nothing has happened. Supposedly, Mr. Holbig is putting up a privacy fence, two hundred feet in the front, three hundred on the side. What, what's gonna happen to the rest of the fence? The rest of the fence still has barbed wire and it's still falling down. You also told me to call the police when he works over his hours. I have filled out complaint forms, gave them to Gary and then I was told to call the police and they would fill out a form and get that to Gary. Okay, I'm already three forms in with Gary and one to the police and nothing is still done. So how long is it gonna take for the fence? Because his fence permit allows him six months to put up the fence. So is that the same timeline as the ordinance that needs to be fixed? Is it six months you give to fix a fence out of ordinance?
To talk to...
I'm confused, I don't know what else to do.
I, I know he's putting the fence up sooner than later. He, he...
And what is that? It's already been seven weeks, plus I filled out a form in May.
Right, have you, have, since, since we've gone over it with the police and everything and Roman told you the process, have you called the police with a new complaint in the past month or two?
No.
Okay. If you have to, and you do, you'll, you'll see, you'll see action.
But you told me to go and fill out papers with Gary on the complaints that I have, which I have three in with videos of. Then you switched it back to the police. I already have thirty complaints into the police about his old structured ordinance that he had to follow on his hours, thirty. Then I go to Gary, now I'm back to the police. What do I do?
Well, I, I thought we, we were working it out and, and...
But we're not, nothing has changed.
I thought it was, thank you for your comments. Any other public comments?
Joe Vansames, seven two three seven Blue Bill. Good evening, Artie.
Hi.
I get some good words tonight. Thanks for getting those boards taken care of and the trash being emptied down at the dock.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it was like twenty-four hours later it was done. They've been back there at least once a week ever since, like they used to be.
Yep.
Emptying the trash, that's good to see. Uh, issues I wanna bring up, cause I know you're still working on a park down there, there's, where there's handicap parking at the end, two of the signs are missing, they pull them out, never put them back.
Yep.
The lines down there need to be painted yet.
Yep.
Okay, you know about that. The electrical power on the outlets under the benches, that's out again.
Fair.
And that erosion fencing that's still up, I don't see any reason why that couldn't be taken down at this point.
I didn't see a reason it had to go up.
I didn't either.
But...
But it would look a lot better if it wasn't there.
Step here.
Yeah, I know, is, is, is it all final?
No.
Well, they're not gonna let you take it down until it's final.
It's not final at all.
They're not gonna let you take them down until it's final.
Right.
Okay.
Otherwise it'd be a violation.
But I don't think there'll be any more grading or anything down there.
I, I completely agree with you, but it has to do with the permitting process.
All right.
That's a pretty fence you put up, or somebody put up.
But I think the side that is designated for parking for the Pearl Beach Pier should have signage on it indicating that.
It will.
And the other side ought to say Legas Parking, cause like the last ballgame they had, there were more people.
I'm sure.
There were.
Yeah.
And that's the way it is.
Yeah.
And I understand there's no power to the restroom yet?
Not yet, we're waiting for DTE.
Okay, and the other thing was that old outhouse that used to be there, is that gonna stay there?
The what?
The outhouse, the port of...
It'll be gone soon as we get power.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Keep, keep you abreast of what's going on there.
All right, no problem. Thanks for letting me know about the, um, the outlets. All right, thanks, Joe. Any other public comments?
Steve Craft, six four three one GNO. Uh, echo, the park, uh, the pier down there looks really good, it's coming along, so. Um, a couple of things, last meeting that we had, we talked about South Water Authority Board, it seemed to get more emotional and not so factual, so I just wanted to clear a couple of things up. There was a couple of things in the plan that called for, historically, a five-year plan to reduce the flow, um, through the plant. And I know it's a problem, it's been a problem for decades. Um, the board, this board's been, I think you guys have been in place for at least a decade, right? Um, so you've been dealing with it for at least that long and so has everybody else, but the five-year plan, it said, last meeting, it said, somebody said that it was going from a hundred percent to zero. You guys know it's not true, that the five-year plan took it from a hundred percent to drop it to, down only thirty percent, right? It only dropped it thirty percent to get, and, and still that plan wasn't being followed. Actually, it was abandoned. Um, the other thing was, well, the authority board members, I'm a little concerned, I know we passed it and everything, still waiting for Algenac tomorrow probably, but the authority board members, the, the meeting said the intent was not to pay the board members, the authority board members. That's kinda silly, I, I don't see anybody doing that without pay. But saying that the intent was not to pay them, then saying not to pay them in the agreement is two different things. The agreement says they can or may be paid a reasonable compensation, doesn't say what reasonable is and who decides that? The board decides that amongst themselves, so I think that's a little bit, it, it needs some addressing, I think. I don't think they should decide what they pay, just like I don't think this board should. But, um, the things about the capacity at it, um, it seemed to be the general consensus at the meeting that eighty-five percent, according to the new plan, gives you a warning letter, basically, come up with a plan. If you're over capacity, then you get fined. It decide, it's, it's, it's up in the air about what makes over capacity, is it daily, is it quarterly, is it annually? I don't really know that yet. But just in the month of August, the entire plant had ten days over eighty-five percent, uh, ten days over a hundred percent with a max at five point eight two million gallons and the max is only two point seven. So the flow rate, just in, in the max of August, one day was five point eight two million gallons a day when the flow rate was only supposed to be two seven. So you had ten days over the capacity, that's fifty percent of the month apparently was over, you know, capacity or close to it, so it's a little bit nerve-wracking that you're gonna get a, a warning letter after eighty-five percent when you're almost half of the month, or at least a third of the month, you're over eighty-five percent. And then, and then another ten days over a hundred percent. So that's, it's a little bit strange. I, I don't think this thing is, uh, gonna go over very well, I, I think we're heading for trouble. But, but you guys have been running it for a long time, so we'll see, I guess, but, um, another topic. It seems like I was talking about, you guys have been here for a decade and that's great, I mean, you know the community, you know the people. I just would like, some of the decisions that I see, I like to remind you that you represent the people, not your own interest or whatever you have, your personal feelings there. So when somebody comes up to talk and says something, you know, at least listen to them and take a little bit of self-reflection, if, am I making this decision? Most of the decisions that you make are so mundane and routine, I get it. Pass a motion, pass it, go right through and all the problems, you know, the budget, all the paying the bills and everything, but some of them are not, like this South Water thing is not a mundane decision. This is a serious thing, you already passed it, so there's nothing we can do about it, but, um, and the, the reason I'm bringing it up is, is a couple of reasons. Um, one, a few months ago, you passed, oh, you made a motion and passed it to pay some people for unused leave time. It says in the contract that their leave time is forfeited, you guys all know that, because you discussed ways to pay it and you came up with retention bonus and so you paid it, it's okay that you decided to do that, but actually, it's a violation of the contract to do that. But you, you passed a motion, it's okay, you paid it. I'm saying, it, it seems that you've gone out of the mindset that you're the employers of some of these people and not their friends, okay? You can be friends and employer, but when the decision comes, you gotta do the boss aspect of it, okay? Please, um, that's all I'm saying, just a little self-reflection before you do this and make sure that you're following the rules and not breaking them for the benefit of a few people, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? No other public comments? Okay, moving right along to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with a board meeting minutes of nine eighteen twenty-three and board approved checks payroll of September of twenty twenty-three and checks cut in between meetings.
Work. Motion and support, any discussion?
On the payroll, um, I know you mentioned that you have a hundred employees and a fifteen million dollar budget before, but I thought we have forty-five employees and a seven point two million dollar budget. Which is it? Is it, it is forty-five, right?
Is this part of the consent agenda?
Well, I wanna talk about payroll, because I still have a problem with this payroll and, um, wanted to maybe ask you, Artie, like, on the additional duties, what did you perform for the month of September? That's roughly, you know, worth three thousand.
I'll give you a list tomorrow.
Okay.
Probably eighty-five, ninety percent of my job is, is non-statutory.
All right, I'll, I'll take that, Cindy and Kristy too then. But I still disagree that we're paying additional duties, I want that, to see that all in, in a salary.
We've gone, how many times have we gone over the reason why we split the salaries up and give the trustees more control?
And it also gives control of the vote on the board.
I don't, I don't...
I disagree with that.
You've never explained to me how that happens.
Well, if...
And maybe tomorrow you can explain it to me.
Everybody doesn't vote together, they don't get their money, that's simple.
I don't understand that.
Okay.
But, okay, any more discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Next, on their new business, we have a special friend here, LJ. And he's gonna tell us about Angelman Syndrome Awareness, is it this month?
February.
February, oh, I'm sorry, February. So I'm glad, because maybe we can do something special before February for this. But if you wanna talk about it?
Now, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
This is...
He's gonna go... Hey, LJ, whoops.
Are you okay?
We should have him sit right here.
Hi.
No.
So this is LJ, um, he has Angelman Syndrome, um, it's an extremely rare genetic condition that affects one in every fifteen to twenty thousand. Um, so with that comes developmental delays, um, seizures, balance, in coordination issues, limited to no speech, so with, we have quite a few struggles, however, one of the blessings is an extremely happy demeanor, as you can tell. Um, so International Angelman Day is, um, February fifteenth, which is the day after Valentine's Day. And so we just wanted to spread awareness, like throughout the community. Um, there is also, um, two other Angelman kiddos that we know of in St. Clair County, so one being Port Huron and one being, I believe, Marysville area. So I don't know if we can even do this in a more like county level. Um, but we just wanted to spread awareness, just because, you know, LJ's gonna be going to schools, we're probably going to, most likely, we're gonna try and streamline him with assistance in public school. Um, but at the same time, we also want to spread awareness and get kids comfortable with him, um, just so that, you know, there's, they, more acceptance, I guess.
Okay, so it's February fifteenth?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Let's, uh, pass a resolution declaring at our next meeting, let me, if you send me some information on it in an email, I'll forward that to the county.
Okay.
And, and see if we can get something at the county level and, and the county health department, I, I know they got some new people there.
Okay.
Um, I got a question to ask for you.
Yeah.
Um, in, in our park, we, we have one core board, it's called.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's for helping people that are non-verbal communicating and we're gonna be putting some more, does, do they work okay for LJ?
Oh, yeah, um, we're, it's still a work in progress.
Right.
You know, but yes, he is doing, he is, um, communicating much more effectively with that.
Okay.
So, yeah, he's in Mrs. Hume's class right now.
Okay, good.
So, mm-hmm.
All right.
Oh, um, so, and one more thing, just to piggyback and...
Yeah.
We could table that maybe for some other time, but, um, so we're on Anchor Bay Drive, eight four eight six, right at the third bridge and, you know, since they redid the br, um, like, the, the road, the traffic is very fast. Um, they're, I'm sure you guys already know.
We do appreciate the, uh, the police, uh, this, you know, the digital...
Yep.
That helps a little bit, I think.
Um, is there a way, because there's, uh, that we know of one other special needs family, but is there a way that we can get like a sign maybe put up?
I'll find out, I think we could.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
Um, I, I, that would have to go through the county road commission.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll, I can request that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thanks.
I have a question, are you funded by any charities at all?
Are we personally?
Well, the, the...
So the Angelman Syndrome actually does have a foundation.
Okay.
Um, that helps other Angelman families and, um, actually, the funding just opened, it opens up twice a year and it's for families that need either equipment or communication devices or travel expenses paid to an Angelman clinic, um, and stuff like that, so, um, there, there's a lot that they do for the community.
Okay.
So...
All right, if, if you have any special needs, let us know, cause we, we, we have, you know, different options.
No, thank you, I know last time you and I talked, you said you had a friend and I think, because it, it's hard with this journey, I mean, there's already so many obstacles and there's no handbook and it's not like there, you know what, your life's gonna be very tough.
Right.
So here, here's everything that you need to know. We have to basically find on our own and luckily, we've been blessed, we, he qualified for a program through the community mental health and we're getting in-home services, but I wouldn't have known that if I didn't call around, you know?
Right.
And so I don't know what is available for our kids, so...
Okay.
So, yeah, any, any help, assistance, point me in the right direction, you know, I mean, we...
Perfect.
We are his voice and his advocate, so...
Yes. All right, well, appreciate you coming in and letting us know.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Bringing your family.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You rock. Thank you. All right. I wanted LJ to come up here and sit right here.
Sorry. His parents didn't think that was a good idea.
No, I know, it probably wasn't, but hey, hand in the gavel. So, all right, next, uh, oh, that was fun. Um, we have four resolutions and, on the agenda with the R, we had, um, four special assessments, and, um, the, they, they've all had pots of money sitting there doing nothing. So what these resolutions wanna do, we wanna refund them back to the people who paid them. They won't be getting a check, but they, they'll see the reduce on their winter taxes, is that right? On their winter tax bill. And, uh, you know, each one of they, there is for different, uh, amounts, there is Stark Drive, Venice Highway, Lake Drive, and Goodrich Highway. So...
Would you like to do these individually, or do you want to lump them together?
I would love to lump them together if the board so decides and save four roll call votes.
That's fine. They're all for the same thing, so...
Yeah. What's that?
So they're all for the same thing, just a different drive, we can do them all together?
Yep, different drive and, and, uh, yeah. So they're basically refunding the excess amount back to them. And then if these roads wanna do work later down the, down the, uh...
Down the...
Yeah, they, they can reapply for a special assessment, another one, and go through the process. But what was it, Lake Drive, I mean, they haven't touched theirs in what, ten years, Sherry? So, you know, let's get, get the money back to them, so. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the special assessment, resolutions twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-four through twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seven. It is a special assessment surplus. Um, there was a resolution for a surplus on Stark Drive, resolution for a surplus on Venice Highway, a resolution for a surplus on Lake Drive, and a resolution for a surplus on Goodrich Highway.
Support. All right, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
So we originally did it to do maintenance and repairs, and we did them all, and the money's just sitting there?
Yeah.
What happened? Okay.
And we don't release anything unless they request it, so, and we haven't had any requests or anything, and, you know, so...
But it's been sitting there for years.
Right. We wanna give the money back to them.
Okay.
And save us a little bit of bookkeeping.
So in ad-libbing, we get a bid for a project, right? The special assessment goes out to cover the cost of that project. Now, if the contractor, things go well and it comes under budget or under bid, now we have a surplus that sits there, unused funds, correct?
Yep.
And so now we're looking to give those funds back to the homeowners.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep, some of them were like for snow removal, and they haven't had, I don't know what they're doing for snow removal now. They're not using this, so, uh, they've been dormant.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I understood it. This may go back to when they were gravel, is that...
Do you have...
Yeah.
Did you have to notify everybody to tell them, or did we or not? We didn't, okay.
We haven't approved it yet.
We initially sent letters, and we're sending some after the meeting, too.
Okay. So if anybody wanted to use the money for anything, they'd know it was there.
Yep.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have a resolution, um, I'm not sure what we're gonna do yet for, um, anyhow, what it is, we can get matching road funds from the county. It's supposed to be every other year, but I've been lucky enough to get it every year. But, uh, this past year, we asked, uh, um, for a road millage, and it failed, which is fine, and so we didn't do a big road project last year. And I'm not sure if we have it in the budget for this, but if the, I want, I didn't wanna not do this in case the board does want to do a paving job, and the next one really on the list is to repave fruit and cemetery. Um, the estimated cost to do that, uh, project is about one, little under one and a half miles, it'd be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and, uh, which the county would give us fifty thousand dollars if we passed this resolution. And the job, it would probably be next budget year. Um, but I wanted to get this put, passed and in place in case, you know, we so do Jews to, um, do that.
So Artie, what kind of, um, what kind of work would they be doing? Would they be replacing the asphalt, do chip sealing?
No, it would be, for the one-eighty, it would be, uh, a two-inch asphalt cap on top.
Because, I mean, that's a main thoroughfare for the buses.
Oh, yeah, it is. I, I'd like to see it done, but...
And then we also have a lot of trucks on that, right?
Yep, and, and we've been doing a lot of, um, rubber cracks sealing and, and patching and holes. I know we did a couple culverts, one right here at Island Drive.
And that ends pretty rough.
Yeah, and, um, um, and truthfully, I, I threw in cemetery because it's just a little road, and there is a lot of cracks on it and everything, but, you know, I'm, we're not gonna do a, a job just for that little road.
Right.
It wouldn't make sense to, for mobilizing, so I put cemetery on it, too. Um, and, uh, like I say, yeah, the buses and a lot of people use that road, truthfully.
Do we have any fund balance left in the roads from last year?
Uh, we had about seven thousand dollars.
Oh, that's right.
That was it.
That's right.
And, uh, um, it, uh, yeah, so...
So is this fruit road already all the way from Island Drive to the city limit?
Yeah, to Elmag, city limit. So, so it's, it's a little, it's, it's about one-point-four, maybe a hair more miles, uh, long, and the price of this, which everybody knows, has gone way up, but I just wanna secure the fifty grand match, and that's what this resolution does.
Wasn't the last time that was capped, or...
Fruit?
Yeah.
Uh, it hasn't been done in the last twelve years, I know that much. Um, so I, I really couldn't tell you. Probably twenty years.
I'd like, I'd like to know if that was a cap on there twelve years ago or whatever, and then the two...
Well, it was longer.
I just wanna know how long a two-year cap is gonna last. We do have, and there's no weight limit on it.
Yeah, a little bit. You'll, you'll get thirty to forty years. Uh, and that was my goal before, because we have forty-four miles of paved roads that the township is responsible for. And so right when I got in, I was trying to do a road, a, a mile a year, road a year, basically. Um, and although, you know, we, we don't have a road tax, we're one of the few townships that don't have a road tax, so it comes out of our general fund, which is point-five mils. Um, our general, general, uh, road, our general fund generates a little over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year to run the whole township.
From the taxes, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, that's, that's roads, that's big, everything, so. So it's a challenge to do, to do these jobs without the road tax. And so it got to the point where, you know, it's tough to do, you know? So we did ask for a point-three-five mils, and, or is it point-three?
Point-three-five.
Point-three-five, that would cover this, and we could have done some other ditch, a lot more ditching. The, the general, that comes out of ditch, ditching, too. We're, we're doing a ditching project right now on La Croix, on the island, and I could only do half of it, but that half is thirty-five thousand dollars of it, you know, so it, it doesn't go far. So anyhow, this resolution is to pass, you know, secure the fifty thousand dollar match if we so do want to pave that. And the, the county acts, they're on different calendars. If we said, sign the work order today, let's do it, half the time it would happen this current year before July, but usually it happens the following budget year anyhow. So, but that's, if we wanna do that road, that would be a discussion for, for later on down the road, but...
Is this one-eighty, Artie, is this a, like a not-to-exceed amount?
It's an estimate until it goes out for bids.
Okay.
And... I get an estimate from the county road.
So at one-eighty, if we're gonna capitalize on the fifty thousand dollar match, we're still talking about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in township funds, which right now looks like it would come out of our general?
That's where it would come out.
Right from our general fund.
Yep. Yep.
And fifty thousand is the max that the county will give?
Yes, yeah. And that, that money's generated from income that they, it's a program. I sit on the Township Bridge and Road Commission Committee, and, and they generate, uh, money from our landfill for selling electricity back to the DTE, and that generates, uh, revenue. And we set aside, the county sets aside, half of that revenue to, to fund this match of, you know, and other townships across the, the county. Uh, so it's, it's a good program, and we, like I say, we've taken advantage of it more than we're supposed to, but...
We've been pretty successful.
We've been, yes, and, and they know it.
So we filed for it, but we're not guaranteed to get it, because we've gotta see who all files for it?
Well, yeah, but we'll get it.
Okay.
Can I add a suggestion into that? Um, with fruit roads, especially between Island Drive and Nook, it is very dark, and I believe it is very hazardous to any type of pedestrians. So if there, I don't know if there's something that would be available to us for increased safety?
Yep.
With matching brands?
On, on that, actually, in fact, it was cool, we, remember when we had the Boy Scouts here? Yep, six years ago, it was on my Facebook, I just reshared that meeting. And one of the scouts suggested, and we've been looking at it, how fruit road, it, it's, it's not a safe road, there's no shoulders.
Is that much shoulder there, yeah, no sidewalks?
So, we, we, the DDA looked at putting sidewalks on, on that road, which I think would be awesome, but the problem is with land that they would have to buy, and the easements they would have to buy, and the ditches they would have to fill in for, just to Nook to Island Drive, uh, the DDA, they were looking for over a million dollars for the, for that, that piece of sidewalk.
Right, by fully redoing all?
Yeah, and I don't know, you probably got letters when that was going on or something, we were looking, looking for easements to do that then. And, uh, so, you know, they bought, the DDA balked at that, but, yeah, we, we...
Or even potentially with maybe a couple increased, you know, lights?
Yeah, that's not a bad, bad...
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Definitely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So any, uh, entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution two-zero-two-three dash two-eight, which is a request for local county road matching funds, uh, i.e., uh, fruit roads.
Yep.
Support.
Yeah, motion support. Any more discussion?
Kinda like buying tires for your car, isn't it?
Yep, you know, and, and that's what I said.
You gotta have them.
If you let a road...
You gotta maintain them.
...deteriorate and you lose the base, it's three times, four times the cost. This, the, the base is still good, and if we do, do it, you know, we, we, we go and fill up all the, before, we do a lot of prep work, uh, before we put the cap on, we fill in the holes, we do this, we do that, we replace any culverts, because it really bothers me, you pave a road, then you have to replace a culvert. We, we replace all the culverts if they're five years or older on them, and then we'll do the, the, the cap. And, uh, you know, like I say, you should get forty years from that, providing, you know, it's done right, so. All right. We have motion and support, right?
Mm-hmm.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
So I'm gonna vote yes on this, but I want some strong consideration for Falkert Road the next time we come up with a project.
Actually, Falkert would be number two.
Okay, because that road's starting, and it, and it's, they're very similar, right? They're both narrow, they're, they're both starting to deteriorate, um, they're both used a lot.
And, and not to interrupt your, 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 your vote, but we've talked to getting the, um, speed limit reduced on Falkert.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Because back in the day, it was just farmland, and it's fifty miles an hour going one way, but the other way is forty-five miles an hour. I don't understand that.
There was a woman walking a, a baby stroller...
Right.
...with two children in her stroller, and she had to get out of the way as my truck was approaching.
Mm-hmm.
And I just thought to myself, that's so, we could do better.
And, and when that project, you know, Chris, when that project was going in, I was lobbying with the planning commission to put sidewalks...
Yes.
...on one side, and that failed to happen.
Yes.
So...
My vote yes.
But, but I'd like to get that down to thirty-five, and, and we don't have control over the speed limit of the state police, and they just won't do it. They just won't do it.
Well, we'll keep asking them.
So, can only do what we have, we can do.
Well, you can try and get it reduced on fruit road, too, because they fly down that road.
Yep, sorry to interrupt the vote.
I sidebared us. My vote was yes.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Hey, motion passes. Next, uh, DPW Meter Yokes, thirty-two forty. How are we doing, Lance? Stuff's finally coming in, huh?
Finally.
Amazing.
Only waited about a year, so...
Yep.
Not doing too bad.
So Lance is looking for improvement for, uh, thirty-two, three thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, for the DPW Meter Yokes for three thousand two hundred and forty dollars out of line item five-nine-one-seven-four-six.
Support. Okay, motion support. Any more discussion?
So what are you currently using to isolate, uh, lines for repair?
Right now, we, we've been putting, uh, some of the bleeders have been falling off, so what we do is take a piece of rubber and hose clamp on them right now until we get parts in. It's, it's tough, what do you do? Gotta keep, you know...
Do what you have to do, huh?
Gotta keep people in water, so...
And we already approved to order them, and it's in the budget, right, so...
Yep.
It's just a matter of paying for it now.
The hardest part is the wait.
What's the time, timing on that?
They ordered them in February.
They were ordered actually before February the first time, then they lost the order. The second time, we ordered them, and they lost the second order. So I ended up ordering them through two different entities. Instead of Corin Maine, I ordered them through Ferguson, too. So, and then first one that came in finally was Corin Maine, so...
So you have these in your possession?
Just gotta pay the bill. Okay, we have motion and support, right? Any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next line, hey, how we, how we doing on our, uh, water meter antennas? I know we're waiting on them.
We're waiting actually now on the clips of them.
Oh, the clips, that's right, that's what it is.
I've got 300 clips on order if they ever come in. They got to come all the way from Denmark, so that doesn't help.
Right. All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Hurry up and wait.
Yep, hurry up and wait. Okay, next, Fire Instructor Course. Chief? For Sergeant Matthews and DeVroy.
Good evening. Requesting permission from the board to send Sergeant DeVroy and Sergeant Matthews to an Instructor One course. This is part of the requirement, is being an officer, getting their officer certification. It's mandated by the state that they have Instructor One first, and then they go into the officer portion of the certification. It's being held in Kalamazoo by the Kalamazoo Public Safety Department. It's five days. They go one week for three days, and then the second week, it's two days. And it's only costing us lodging for the two, and that's $543.41.
What will this Instructor One course do for them?
They'll be able to, be able to teach, for one thing, through the state certifications, and it's required by the state for them to have it, to be an officer in our department.
That's fairly new requirement, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
A few, few years ago, yeah, no, a few years ago, it's added requirement.
Now, once they take the course, they don't have to maintain it, they can let it go, but in order to get that fire one, fire officer one certification, they have to have that Instructor One course.
Yeah, when I was certified, we didn't have any of that.
And it's free?
Yeah, speech, of course, I needed it, but.
They don't have one around here, so that's why we're going to Kalamazoo, right?
Right, right. Probably next year, they'll probably have more around the area. The problem is, they have one year to get their certification for their officer's position. That was part of the agreement of us promoting them.
Yep, gave them a year to get it, so. All right, any, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Instructor Course, One Course, for Sergeant DeVroy and Sergeant Matthews, for $543.41, out of line 206-960.
Support.
Okay, motion, support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have our fit testing for $4,560, I said, $4,560. Is it fit everyone's mask, custom fit, right, George?
Right, this is done every year. It's yearly, required yearly for the firefighters to have this done. And this, they get fit tested for their AV3000 mask, which is their respirator that they use to go in the fire. They're also fitted for a N95 mask, which is a particulate mask for hepatitis, not hepatitis, but for COVID. And they're also fit, or not fit tested, but they're also tested for TB, and also pulmonary function test for their lung capacity.
I'll make a motion to approve the fit testing for $4,560, out of line number 206-962.
Support.
Okay, motion, support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Also, Mark, I've been in contact with the young lady at Lions Club, and we're going to have a CPR class sometime this month.
Oh, perfect, thank you, thank you.
All right, next, we move to board member comments. Cindy.
Um, we've been doing some talk with local clerks. I think we're going to host the nine days of early voting here, and we've been talking with Elginak about potentially having, doing Elginak and Clay together. It's a lot of work and a lot of cost to do this, so the thought is, joining together, we can share the costs, especially when you're not sure how the turnout's going to be. But there'll be more, more to come on that down the road.
Have you talked to Ira, too, or no?
I have talked to Ira. Ira is planning to work with Casco and.
That makes sense.
Cotterville, yes. Yep, so, I think that we'd all like to do it one place together, you know, but.
Be too confusing.
Be a little confusing. You have to have a tabulator, you have to have, you know, it's not a tabulator you can use on Election Day, it has to stay sealed until Election Day, so there's the cost of a new tabulator. They don't recommend having more than six precincts and a tabulator. We can't combine precincts until probably after the presidential primary.
Because we have four precincts, right?
We do.
And then Elginak has.
They have two.
They have two.
And I think down the road, they will probably end up combining into one, and we will probably end up combining into two. Which, you know, cost-saving primarily. The polls aren't that busy, now that you can vote 45 days by mail for any reason, you can come in nine days early and vote. But we're going to see what that turnout is like in February. Be a good, good test to see what the turnout is.
Thank you. John?
I just wanted to say, with our Sturgeon Fest being completed and our summer events done for the, for the year, I want to throw out a thank you to Cindy Babish.
Yep.
I don't think people realize how much work she puts into that. So I just wanted to say, nice job, Cindy, and putting that together all summer long. And it's October, so happy hunting season, and everybody be careful out there.
Okay, very good, thank you. Maureen?
Um, I just wanted to say for Karen Klingenberg, she called me, we worked together, and she put a list of what she'd like to see happen. I know I sent it to you, but I don't know, did I copy the board on it? I will send that to all of you guys tomorrow if you want to see it. I think it's very reasonable what she wants, and I know, you know, we kind of left it, the board was stalemate it on a, on a vote, so I just think we need to either contact Rich with that information, or, I mean, I asked her to do it, I'll have to ask her if she did or not, but.
I'll do it.
Yeah, all right, well, it's good to hear that you'll do that, then. Great, Artie.
I have a question, because I seem like I'm lost here. You guys are talking about things, but I have no clue what you're talking, what are you talking about she was requesting?
This is just board comments. Karen Klingenberg was up here about, she has got a complaint about Elginak Sand and Supply.
Oh.
So I just want the board to know, I'll send them something about it tomorrow, we'll try to get the two of them, you know, in agreement. So I think it's reasonable.
They've had talks, so we'll take it offline.
Okay.
Mark?
We only had one item on the planning commission last Wednesday, and that was approved. It was a expansion on a existing pole barn on commercial property on Fruit Road.
Okay, very good, thanks. Chris?
Elginak Clay Historical Society has an annual spaghetti dinner.
Yes.
It's a fundraiser for them, and it's happening Tuesday, October 24th, at the Saint Catherine's Community Center. It's from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m., so if you're in the mood for some pasta and want to support a really good local cause, you can find that. The Valor League has a craft show on October 7th, 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Elginak VFW. And as John alluded to earlier, cold weather's coming. It's hunting season, the critters are going to start really moving, especially into this weekend. It's, we're going to drop like 20-some degrees, so Thursday into Friday, Friday into Saturday, expect to see a lot of activity. Be careful on the roads, and be safe.
Do you know when that safety class is? I don't know if you want to mention that. Don't we have one?
Yeah, I did, my supervisor's report is full.
Oh, it's sold out.
Yeah, it's sold out, it's filled out.
Yeah.
What's the age limit on that?
There is one.
There is an age limit.
Built up.
Why, you think you're not old enough, or you?
I was, I'm so old, I didn't need to take one, so I'm like.
Okay, just checking.
But it's always been a take, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I don't have a bunch to say.
All right, motion to adjourn.
This Thursday, oh, that spaghetti dinner, they make awesome sauce.
It's a really good dinner.
They make awesome sauce on it, and this Thursday, there's a fundraiser at VFW, it's pierogi fest, and.
That's always really good, too.
And Janice likes pierogis more than she likes me.
Okay, so I guess you'll be going to that.
We'll be going to that one, so.
What's your trunk or treat here?
I don't, well, we don't do that, that's Elginak and the Knack.
Well, we have that going on October 31st, at the Lions Club in Elginak.
Right.
Or actually, it's in Clay Township.
The Elginak Lions and Clay Township.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in Clay Township.
All right.
It is, he's right.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Yep.
Support.
6:59. I had a bet with chief.
Support.
Congratulations, Steve.
Yeah, good job, Steve.